Come by suggestion box.
Good morning. Now, you do better than that. Good morning. Okay. Good morning. Welcome to today's town hall meeting. I'm David Bofield, the lead leader for the church. And I'm joined up here today by the heads of each committee of the leadership team. Thank you for being here, both in person and on the live stream. And just a brief agenda and update. We'll start. We'll have a brief presentation by each of the committee leads. With exception of finance, Chair Finance Dennis Wise had travel issues. So Nina Davis, our business manager, will present the finance piece. And we're going to try to leave some time at the end for your questions, concerns, or comments. So feel free to write stuff down and get it prepared before we get to that point. At this point, we will get it started. I believe Kathy Cox, Chair of Church Council, will begin for us. Thank you again for being here.
There we go. Thank you. Good morning. First of all, thank y'all for being here. Thank you to those online who have joined us today. This is a really important time for the church. And honestly, I'm pretty excited about the things not only that you're going to hear today, but all the things that are happening around us. And I hope that you're going to be as excited as we are. So I just have a couple of updates for Church Council because we want to leave time at the end to talk about some of the things that we share with you in the FAQs. First of all, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. I want you to know who the members are in your Church Council. These are the folks in the congregation who are representing you every day. If you are in the audience and you serve on Church Council, I'd love for you to stand up so people can know who you are. There you go. Thank you. If you will give them a round of applause. They really work very hard for you regularly, each and every day, and have been very dedicated to the work that we've done so far. If you can go ahead to my next slide, please. I only have three slides today. As I mentioned to you early in the year, you know, one of the chief missions of the Church Council is really about the strategy for the church. And so we spend a lot of time working on not only the business pieces that require our attention and overseeing what's happening in all of the other church committees, but also in thinking about the future for this church and what the things are that we need to do in order to sustain ourselves and continue to grow disciples in Jesus Christ. So as you recall, the Futurist Committee, we talked about that earlier in the year, made recommendations. Many of you served in that group. And we've been working on the recommendations there. So one of the key things that we have been talking about and working on this year is about how we create supplemental revenue sources with one of our biggest assets, which is this fabulous building that you're sitting in right now. So in conjunction with the Trustees Committee, Church Council and trustees were able to update our facility use policy, including to update the prices that we actually charge, not only the community but other organizations to use this building. And we're working on marketing plans today as well so that we can make it more visible in the community as people can utilize this space for some of the things that they use. Additionally, we've been able to make those prices a lot more competitive with others in the market. Our friends out at UMC Allen have helped us with that, and they've been really great partners in doing that work. The other thing that we have been working on is with finance and the finance goals that the Finance Committee and you all work on all the time. And so we've been working on how we can also create additional opportunities to attract more community into the congregation, not only here in the pews, but also to our online community, which actually is growing each and every day. So that is what Church Council is working on. If you go again to my final slide, this is an open meeting, and we'd love to have you there. So if you have things that you would like to be on the agenda or you have questions for this group, I surely hope that you will attend. One of the other things that came out of that group this year is our suggestion box, which many of you have contributed to. And we have not only answered and improved on some things, but also have passed some of these things on to other committees for them to evaluate. We had had both a digital and a manual, I guess you would call it, opportunity for you to submit suggestions. Unfortunately, our digital opportunity is out of order. And I don't have an "out of order" sign to hold up. But we currently cannot take digital suggestions. So until that is back into place, please feel free to use the old-fashioned pen and paper method and submit, continue to submit suggestions into that box. If you had in the past done a digital suggestion and never got feedback, I apologize. Go ahead and stick that in the box, and we will get back to you on that. And at least let you know how that is progressing or if it's not something that is viable this time. With that, I will hand it over to Marty James, who is the Chair of our Trustee Committee.
Nice to see you. So the trustees are in charge of the facilities. And that's pretty much anything having to do with the building, contracts having to do with the building, insurance. We've also been managing the construction that's going on outside. The parking lot, as you guys can see, it's nearly finished. It's been a long project, but it's looking really great. It's nearly done. We have a few things left to finish. Number one, we're going to be putting up poles for lighting in the parking lot. There's also, the city is requiring us to do sidewalks all along Spring Creek and all along Parker Road. That's yet to come in. You can probably see outside the office, there's a big pile of dirt and everything. That's a fire hydrant. We, it was like eight feet deep. And we've got some parts that are still coming in. Those should be in within the next couple of weeks, and we'll be able to finish up that fire hydrant there. We also have a dumpster enclosure that needs to come in. That's going to be coming in on this side of the church over here, closer to Spring Creek. And so we're working right now on getting, on getting the engineering to be able to get that done because it's not thick enough in order to hold, just the regular parking lot's not thick enough. So we're working on that. And once that's done, it's going to look great. You can see there's a lot of trees that have gone in and a lot of grass that's gone in. It's looking pretty good. So the other project that we've been working on is the Yard Birds Building. That is almost completely done. Right now, we're waiting on the garage doors. I understand they're in, and they should be installed hopefully Monday. We also need to put some concrete into the entrances so that you could drive the equipment into the building. We still have electrical that needs to go into the building, and we're working on getting permitting for that with the city. Hopefully, by the end of the month, that'll be done. And then it's going to all get cleaned up, which is going to be great once it is. But it's, I would say it's 95% done right now. So those are the construction projects that are going on. And then around the building, we have regular maintenance that we've been working on. I'm excited. We got the dishwasher repaired last week. So now we have a fully functioning kitchen. And we're hoping eventually we're going to be able to rent that space out so that we can bring in some income for the church. We've got the gym. Unfortunately, many of our lights are out. We have 24 lights in there, and I think we have less than eight that are working. So we're working on getting those replaced. The lights in the chapel, we have 22 lights. And I think there might be six working. So we're working on getting that done. Unfortunately, and you're going to hear from finance, but we have different pockets of money. A lot of people think, why can't we use the land sale money for those kind of repairs? And that's because the land sale money can only be used for capital purchases. And the repairs aren't capital purchases. So there's a few things that we need to get done. And unfortunately, we're having to put those off right now. We've got some, a couple of places in the church where the windows leak just a little bit when the rain comes a certain direction. So we've put that off. But we did get one of the HVAC units for this fixed. And it was able to be installed on the roof in the last couple of weeks. So we've got ongoing things that are happening with the church on a regular basis. Some we, we have to put off just a little bit because of the finances. And some of them were able to get done right away. But the good thing that's coming on is in February 22nd, I've kind of created a day, the name for the day, Love Your House Day. And it's a day when all of us as a congregation are going to come together, and we're going to work on our building. And we're going to work on things that are easy and hard. And what I need to know, and what the trustees need to know, is if you guys see anything that you think needs to be fixed, that you think that we can work on that day as owners of this wonderful building, please put it in the suggestion box that Kathy was talking about. It's right outside this door on one of the tables out there. And so we've got a couple of months to get everything planned. And if you could, you know, if something needs to be painted, something needs to come down in the bathrooms that, you know, in the men's bathroom, us girls aren't going to know about, or vice versa, let us know so that when we all come together and love our house, we can get those projects done. The trustees.
Good morning. I'm Suzanne Bab. Cassandra Bowle and I co-chair the Missions Committee. I would like to also ask any members of the Mission Committee who are present to please stand. Take a look around. I want to say a thank you to our volunteers for, next slide, thank you, for working over 350 hours over the past month alone. Because of your dedication to the golf tournament, to the balloon festival, and to yesterday's yard sale, we have raised over 30,000 for Missions. Missions is primarily self-funded at this time, and that money is going to be utilized in following ways. Here's some examples. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I'm going to begin with a story that has expanded over multiple months. This story shows what community connection looks like when we all pull together. It started with four family members showing up for several months at People Who Love People for breakfast on Monday and Thursday mornings. They later joined us for one of our first Loads of Love laundromat nights, where we discovered that there were actually many more members of that family. Our church was able to connect them to the following very important resources. Hope Restore Missions for IDs and a mailing address. If you don't have a home or IDs, how can you get information or mail? God's Pantry for food, Trusted World for clothing, the Samaritan Inn for housing, and Bed Start for furniture. While that family was waiting for their IDs and shelter to become available, our church opened its doors to keep them safe. And this was made possible through our Samaritan Fund, which exists to help people who come through our doors. Judith Reidy does a fabulous job of helping with that. Once their IDs and housing was secured, the family found jobs, saved money for deposits for housing and for auto expenses. And just over a year later, the family graduated from the Samaritan Inn program. All the children were caught up in their schooling. One daughter graduated from high school, and she's now enrolled in Collin College. This transformation didn't happen because of one person, though I will call out Stacy Spears, who does a fabulous job. Or one church. It happened because an entire community of churches, nonprofits, and God's blessing came together to create a web of support. Next slide. I wanted to talk to you about some of our newer people who are involved in our radical, radical missions that Matt has been talking about. Catherine and Chris Haake have been serving sandwiches, making and serving sandwiches for People Who Love People. Kathy Wise, Patty Brower, and Brenda Carr are serving as new mentors in our children's program where we support Memorial, Dooley, and Hickey Elementary Schools. Cindy and David Bofield are leading a newly launched Loads of Love opportunity, again focused on families in those elementary schools. But anyone who comes is eligible, we help them with their laundry. And Anita Hoard signed her company up for Loads of Love. She built a bridge for her coworkers to serve. One of those coworkers is a young man who drives in from Denton because he's fluent in Spanish, and he knows we have that need. Next slide, please. Here's pictures of some of your fellow members. So we have Mike Harrington and his wife, who joined us recently for Loads of Love. You can see many members have been routinely helping us. Next, next slide, please. The Purpose Seeker Sunday School has been serving meals for Journey of Hope. And Carlton and Carolyn Ellis have been joining us with People Who Love People on Mondays and Thursdays. Next slide, please. So our challenge to you this fall is simple. Get out of your comfort zone. As a member of this unique community of diverse believers, how can you use your unique gifts to connect God and grace to yourself and your community? Because First United Methodist Church of Plano, missions is not what we do, it's who we are. If you don't know how to get involved in missions, join us November 2nd in the Parlor for Missions 101. And let's explore how God is calling you. Thank you.
Good morning. So I am here this morning on behalf of the Finance Committee. Dennis Wise was supposed to present today, but his flight got delayed. And so, or got canceled, so he can't be here. So I'm going to discuss the finances of the church with his PowerPoint presentation. So you can see the highlights that we're going to talk about. We've got four things, primary things. And so if you could advance the slide to the 2025 highlights. So we had a very successful capital campaign earlier this year that reduced debt from $750,000 to $173,000. This, that will, we will be debt-free by the end of the year. So this is very significant as we move forward in, in planning for 2026 because we will no longer have expense, expense for debt. Also this year, we've completed new parking lots with the Bird's Nest and significant landscaping. All of this was utilizing the proceeds from the land sale. We have approximately $350,000 left from the land sales. And I need to emphasize here that this $350,000 can only be used for capital expenditures. But we have a lot of ongoing maintenance needs around here. And so those funds will be very helpful and take a strain off of the operating budget going forward. Next slide, please. Okay. Thank you. We implemented documented policies and procedures. So this was an important thing. This was a finding when we had a best practices engagement about a year and a half ago. And so that was something they really recommended that needed to be updated. So that project has been completed and approved by your Church Council. We also implemented a conflict of interest policy and have asked every person in leadership to sign off on that. That everybody has been very willing to comply with that. And it's just simply a best practices as we go forward and is also a part of the financial policies and procedures. Next is our, is a budget summary. We began this year with a balanced budget of $2.1 million. Expenses are slightly over budget, but income is down 10%. Non-pledged giving is down, and our building rent is down. So these two things combined are really putting a strain on the 2025 budget. If you move to the next slide, our budget breakdown is, we have 54% of our budget is in staffing. Utilities and maintenance take up another 26%. Apportionments are 7%. Ministries, only 3%. Our mortgage is 3%, but at the end of this year, that is going to go away. And office supplies, fees, other expenditures are 7%. Next slide. So all of those numbers from the last two slides, I think this graphic does a good job of showing the projection where we are. So if you, the, what's just to explain the graph briefly, it assumes that if we have major giving similar to 2024, and you can, that's the blue line at the very top. And if, the result will be if our expenditures keep going as they are, we'll have an estimated shortfall of $80,000. And finally, there is a summary on the next slide. The FEMC Plan of Physical Property has been rightsized. And I can't emphasize this one enough. So many people have been very generous in this congregation to get us where we are today. Capital can same support is allowing us to be debt-free. And the really bottom line is that we need to increase income or reduce cost as we move forward.
Hey, everyone. I'm Brenda Zimmerman, representing SPRC. So I see a couple of our members in here. Would you stand up if you're currently on SPRC? Thank you. Thank you. So I've explained what SPRC does several times in the past. But just to recap, we're the Human Resources Department of the Church. Today, I thought it would be appropriate to tell you a little bit more about the demographics of the team, the employees that work here at FUMC Plano. I'm going to talk a little bit about their duties. I certainly can't hit all of them. But mainly, I want to just remind everyone of all the things the employees here at First United Methodist Plano do for us and our community every day. First, as you can see on the slide, if you'll go back one, we have a total of 26 employees, when you count our nursery workers, who work a few hours a week. Removing them, we have, oh, let me, I don't want to miss this. We have 12 of those employees who have been with us for 10 years or more, and eight who have been with us for 15 years or more. So excluding the nursery workers, we have nine full-time employees and 12 part-time employees. And as Nina mentioned a minute ago, salary and And as Naina mentioned a minute ago, salary and benefits are the largest single budget item that we have. So about 55% of our total budget goes towards salary and benefits for these 26 team members. There's clearly crossover in a lot of the jobs. People wear lots of hats around here. So I, they all do many things to keep the place running smoothly and to spread our gospel across as many people as they can. But just going into a little bit about what people do. So I'm gonna start with finance, building, and administration. So, just a couple of things. So when you came in today, you had water and coffee and pastries outside. Ruby put those together from the kitchen. JT and Nick actually were in the back a minute ago. So, you know, things get moved around a lot here in the church, and I can't imagine how many chairs and tables they move on, you know, any given week. You heard from Naina filling in for Dennis. Naina and Brenda and Lori basically take that $2 million budget that Naina mentioned, they make sure we're paying the bills on time. They provide reports to the conference, to finance and to counsel. And frankly, you get your giving statements because they do that work every month. So, brief description, but basically, they keep this place running. So, moving on to ministry, and there's no possible way that I could talk about everything that gets done in the ministry team, but just a few things. So the slides today, Nancy Ellison did those. Most of the written communication, the signs you see out there, Nancy does that every week. The fact that these slides are actually up on the screen for us to see, the, in a little bit, when we go into our service, you're gonna have the announcements on video. Ephraim posts, edits, puts that together every week. And you've heard us talk a lot about the fact that our online church services have become very robust and very well organized, thanks to Ephraim. That works very smoothly. I personally have lots of realm questions. I don't know about all of you, but it's not my strength, and Julia Dolberry is amazing to help me with that. Over the summer, we had approximately 175 children go to Vacation Bible School or on a mission trip, which was led by the Minister of Children and the Minister of Youth and I don't wanna leave anyone out, and I'm going to, I know, but one last thing I'd be remiss, missions. We've talked a lot about missions, but Stacy Spears leads that with a heart of gold. And everyone gets involved, for sure, but Stacy's always the one there cheering us on, trying to help our members in this community. So I really do, I did start to attempt to make this brief, and what this team does here is just amazing. It really is. But we're here today primarily to worship. And that's because our ministry team and our music team put together the services for us. They spend hours each week preparing what they feel like is the best message for our church to provide. So, I mentioned music, and I talked about tenure earlier. So Mark actually thinks he's here to play a song in a minute, but Mark is our longest tenured employee here at First United Methodist Plano. He is in his 30th year. So, at the end, I am happy to answer any questions, but I know every day of the week, this team just wishes they had more hours and more hands to continue to do good work.
Okay, now it's your turn. If you have any questions, concerns, comments, we have a mic stand about halfway back down the middle aisle. Please go there and ask your question. If you're too shy to do that, just raise your hand, and we'll send somebody out to ask you, answer your question. So with that, we'll open it up to questions and our comments. The live stream, you can also send your stuff into Ephraim, and we'll get it, we'll try to answer it for you. So any questions, comments, or concerns?
What does it mean that the building is right-sized?
Sorry, I'm better with a mic in my hand. I think you've all known me. What that means is that, back when we moved into this building many years ago, I was here from 15th Street, these pews were full. And we filled up this building. But as time has gone on, we don't need this size of building for the number of people that we have as active members of the church. So, when we sold the land, it was much, it was more right-sized for the people who are using the space and the land around us. Is that a good explanation? Is there anybody else who'd like to contribute to that answer? Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Rick?
So I noticed on the, one of the Finance Committee slides, one of the last ones, there's this ongoing gap between the expenses and the income, and it's a fairly straight line. And then, at the end, the revenue line comes up markedly. So, I'd like to hear what's behind the anticipation of that happening.
Sure. Thank you for the question, and it's a good one. Because historically, when you go back as many years as you can look at from our finances, holidays are coming. And we will get to see a lot of our friends that we don't see during the year, will come in for the holidays, will have a lot of guests, and our income from plate giving will go up. Additionally, because, you know, frankly, we all pay taxes, there will be a lot of gifts that people will give towards the end of the year to help them with their charitable donations, which also helps us from an income statement and standpoint. And so we always, that always happens towards the end of the year, particularly in the holiday time with Christmas. Any, is that, is that good? Does that answer your question? Okay, terrific. Thanks.
I have three questions, and if you don't like any of them, feel free to ignore them.
I don't know if I'm allowed to do that.
My first question is, when you were talking about the revenue shortfall, you mentioned two areas, giving and rents. Is there one of those that's a larger problem than the other, or are they both about equal? I don't know how much money the church brings in in rent.
That's a great question. Do you wanna answer that, or?
I can. So we had projected at the beginning of the year, when the budget was approved, that we would have much more in rental income than it's actually turned out that we have. So, we've got people working on building that process up, but it just, quite frankly, hasn't happened as quickly as we had hoped. So that was one of the shortfalls. And then the other area in which giving has fallen behind is in our non-pledged giving. We were certainly hoping to see that improve in the last two months of the year, as Kathy mentioned. There are a lot of people that are very generous and give, but they don't necessarily make a pledge, and we're hoping to see that close the gap in the last month. That has historically been the case.
Sure. My second question is, is there anywhere that I can see the actual budget that was set? I'm a numbers guy, and I look, like looking at numbers.
Sure. You know, I think that, so Dennis Wise unfortunately is not here today, but Dennis Wise would be happy to show you all of that information so that you can see all of the pieces and parts, all the, the accounts, all of the budget that was created, and the actuals that are coming in, and he would be happy to do that. And afterwards, if you'd like, I can give you his email, and you all can connect directly.
Sure. My last question is, have we looked at any kind of grant writing process to make up the shortfall? I know that a lot of corporate grant giving programs specifically exclude religious organizations, but if you need $80,000, it's best to ask.
That is a brilliant question. And it actually, interestingly enough, and I haven't really told anybody else this, because it just happened, Tim Hopson and I, who was the lay leader in previous years and now serves at this district level, he and I recently met with Stacy, and I'm sorry, her last name is escaping me, who is the District Director of Multiplication. Her job is to multiply disciples and help churches in this area. And she and I and Tim recently met, and she mentioned that there is a lot of opportunity in that area, and in the new year, one of the things that church council will start to do is to investigate those areas. So thank you for bringing it up. Love to have your help, if you don't mind, in the future to help us with that.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you to all of you, because I've been on the trustees before. I know how big of a job it is that all of you do for the church, and all the changes that have been taking place the last two years. I really appreciate all the hard work that you do.
First of all, I'm sorry for my accent and for my English. I just want to thank all the pastors, the three pastors and all the staffs for everything. Last time I was in Santa Ana United Methodist Church, and I was crying because something, like I feel I'm not loved by a friend. But it's me. I want to thank this church for, especially Miss Stacy, for telling me to, she always encourages me. And yesterday, it was raining, but all the people were here to help the mission, and I thank God for everything for this church. And this is a beautiful and big church that spread the good news. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, great. Before we close, I would like to take, yes, April? Sorry, sorry, April.
Okay, I just wanna give, I'm a parent of the Weekday Program, and I just wanna give Patty Puchla a huge, huge shout-out, since she's been involved with the church. She has graciously, tremendously brought parents from the Weekday involved with the church, and I see that as, I'm also the head president of the Parent Teacher Committee, so I just wanna give her a huge shout-out, because we don't hear much about the Weekday Program, but she is doing a tremendous job, and I just really appreciate her.
Thank you for that. She is wonderful. Yeah, she's been a great addition, for sure.
Yeah. A couple of things before we dismiss. Number one, there is a copy of these, of the slides from today's meeting will be available as you leave. If you wanted to see those, that'd be great. And I'd also like to take a matter of personal preference to thank Marty and Brenda for their work and their service on their heads of their committees. They rotate off at the end of the year. So, thank you very much for serving, both of y'all. And if there's nothing else, would you pray with me as we close? Good and gracious God, we thank you for the stay, for this leadership team and their commitment to carrying out your work in our church. Lead us and guide us as we move forward, that we keep in mind, all that we do is for your kingdom. For we ask all in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank y'all so much for being here. Have a great rest of your day.